First order of business is public input. Public input shall be limited to statements from the public relating to any issues with the jurisdiction of the Chelmsford Zoning Board of Appeals that are not currently the subject of a pending public hearing before the zoning board of appeals. Public comment on any pending public hearing shall only be heard during such public hearings. Is there anyone that wishes to speak this evening? Seeing none, I would like to welcome Rod Cleaves. He's our newest associate member of the Board of Appeals. He'll be joining us tonight and for some time to come, I hope.
Of course.
Welcome, Rod. I am just gonna pause a minute. I would like to have our full board here.
Should we get a chair for her?
Is that Jamie you're waiting for?
She probably should have a chair as well.
She needs a chair.
I don't know where you find chairs. Do you know where? I mean, I can grab one of those. Those will be fine. She doesn't need a special chair.
You can sit there unless you ask me to talk. I'll get up. Don't matter.
Wait. No, there's no chair here. There's a couple chairs missing, actually. Weird.
Just put something over there. We'll just grab one of those gray things.
Just lift a chair?
Yeah, we can just do that.
Okay. You can do that. Unless I need to speak, I'll get up and speak on the phone. Okay.
Anything to see here, folks? Just carry on.
Just a little housekeeping.
It falls apart.
She was coming, brother.
If she's coming, because if she's not, we have a problem.
Speaker two.
We don't need her for the first two, right?
No.
No, I guess we can just bypass them. So I will open the first administrative review. 9496 Princeton Street. Brian Welbrenner, DBA Princeton McMahon LLC is requesting an administrative appeal under the zoning bylaw section 195-102B3 for his inability to obtain a permit as per the building commission's determination that the structure is not a three-family dwelling and any other relief deemed necessary. This property is located in the RC District. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Greg Hallidina. I'm an attorney in Chelmsford with offices at 56 Central Square, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Princeton McMahon LLC, the owner of the property at 9496 Richardson Road. And with me is Brian Welbrenner, who is the manager of Princeton McMahon LLC. Princeton McMahon LLC owns the property at 9496 Richardson Road, which is a three-family dwelling. It has eight parking spaces. It was built in 1899, and Mr. Welbrenner purchased it earlier this year. We're here tonight for administrative appeal of the building commissioner's determination that this was not a three-family but a two-family home, and thereby he denied Mr. Welbrenner permits to repair and renovate the three units that had sustained water damage last fall. So just keep in mind, this is not a variance. We don't need to prove the hardship owing to the soil, the topography, et alot shape, nothing like that. And keep in mind again that there's nothing inherently illegal about a three-family dwelling being located in a two-family zoning district, provided it was there before the zoning imposed a two-family limit. And lastly, I would just ask you to keep in mind that this is not a conversion. Mr. Welbrenner is not converting this into a three-unit dwelling. It was always a three-family property. Mr. Welbrenner, before he was 60 years old. He's been a licensed construction supervisor for 36 years. He grew up here in Chelmsford, about two blocks away from this property at 9496. I keep saying Richardson Road, Princeton. I apologize for that.
I thought you said Richardson Road. Yeah, that's okay.
In any event, Mr. Welbrenner grew up in Chelmsford, two blocks away from the property. His father had worked in the mill behind the house, and his memory growing up is there were many multifamily houses, three-family, four-family units in the area that housed the mill workers. There's certainly nothing unusual about a three- or four-family property in that area, which is now a zoning district, which is limited to two-family currently. The property was acquired earlier this year by Mr. Welbrenner from the Golubisky family. They had owned this property for several generations, going back to 1938, as far as I could trace the deeds. Mr. Welbrenner remembers actually first meeting Mr. Golubisky some 25 years ago when he was doing work on another property that Mr. Golubisky owned in Dunstable. They started discussing the old neighborhood, the property at 9496 Princeton Street. Mr. Golubisky had told Brian it was a three-family at that time. He told him he had a long-term tenant on the third floor for 15 years, and Mr. Welbrenner asked Mr. Golubisky, the owner, if you ever list the property for sale, give me a call. I'd be interested in buying it. Well, fast forward, 25 years later, in the fall, there was a broken pipe on the third floor in the property, which caused water damage to the lower levels. Mr. Golubisky, by this time, was getting on in years, and the family had owned the property for 85 years or so. So it was time to sell, and Brian Welbrenner was called, and he purchased the property. Mr. Welbrenner even recalls at the closing that Mr. Golubisky said his dad, who had owned it before he did, had rented the property as three units as well. The issue here is, has this been a three-family since the property was constructed in 1899? And based upon what we're gonna submit to you tonight, I would say the answer is yes. Now, the building inspector concluded that this was a two-family based on his research. He has access to the building department files, which presumably were reviewed. I took a look at them. I could just point out that I found six building permits in the file for this property. The earliest one dated back to 1953, which is a permit to move a garage. And on the application, there's a space that says how many units, how many apartments, and it was left blank. I also found a 1969 permit to build a garage addition. There's a detached garage on this property, and similarly on the application, it says number of units, and it was left blank. 1971, there was another permit for upgrade of electrical service for the property, again on the application where it says number of units, did not have anything. It was blank. In 1974, there was a permit to build a porch on the side of the property, a wood porch, 16 by 10 feet. Similarly, on the application, it says number of units, blank, nothing there. In 2007, another building permit for a new roof was issued, similarly on the question, number of units. It was left blank. And most recently, in 2012, there was an application for a permit to renovate the bathroom on the second floor, and again, no acknowledgement on there that this was a two-family by the applicant. So clearly, the building department files don't have anything definitive from the owner or from anyone who was inspecting the property, and there is, as I said, nothing clearly identifying this as a two-family. And there's not a lot, with all due respect, that the building inspector can go by. He has his records. He has his file. I'm sure he can tell you what he did, but basically, that's the file in the building department that I looked at, and this is assessed admittedly as a two-family. But again, that's not controlling here. What's controlling is what was the use of this property since it was built in 1899. Now, in addition to the statements from the seller and the seller's family that Mr. Welbrenner had heard, he also retained an architect in working on this renovation of the three-family home. And I didn't get a chance to get this to Becky to put it on the screen, but I have letters from the architect. I can give you a copy. I have five or six copies. If you can share, perhaps.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Can we get this to the... For the record, I would just say the letter from Elise Brussera Stone, who is an architect, indicates to whom it may concern. "I am an architect licensed in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I was engaged by Princeton McMahon LLC, owner of the three-story structure at 9496 Princeton Street, North Chelmsford, Mass., to prepare as-built plan of the premises. I am writing to provide my observations from my recent site visit to the property located at 9496 Princeton Street. After visiting the premises, I firmly believe the third-floor apartment was constructed during the same time period as the first and second-floor apartments, which is consistent with turn-of-the-century construction. During my inspection, I noticed several key elements that support this conclusion. First, the presence of Lath plaster, which was commonly used during the late 19th and early 20th century, is evident throughout the building, including the third-floor apartment. Second, I observed the use of knob-and-tube wiring in the third-floor apartment, which was prevalent during the same time period. Third, there are remnants of gas lighting in the third-floor apartment, which suggests that it was originally designed and built during that era. Lastly, the third-floor apartment has two sets of original stairs that serviced the unit. As my opinion, it would not be built this way unless it was a separate dwelling. Based on these observations, I kindly request the zoning board take these findings into consideration when making a decision on the renovation of the property. Thank you very much for your consideration." It's signed by the architect, and she has her stamp affixed to her letter. So clearly, based on the observations of the architect and what was in the building, this was not an add-on of a unit at a later era than the original 1899 construction. And with this project, if a building permit is issued, you'll have plans drawn by an architect and construction work being done by a licensed construction supervisor with 36 years of experience. The property is admittedly run down. There was water damage last fall, but it will be renovated. It will be made safe with upgrades to the plumbing and electrical, and it will ultimately provide three reasonably-priced housing units in the community. All this requires to be done is a determination by this board that this has always been a three-family based on the evidence presented tonight. And I would suggest that the evidence was what the prior owner of more than 80 years had said on multiple occasions to Mr. Welbrenner. You have a signed and stamped letter from the architect indicating everything about the construction is consistent with the era of 1899, when it was built with separate entrances for each of the three units. You have eight parking spaces, which would be more consistent, I would suggest, with something that's historically been three units as opposed to two. And then you have the personal memory of the neighborhood of Mr. Welbrenner, having visited many times. There's nothing unusual at all about a three-family in that neighborhood, and as I said, there's nothing inherently illegal. The only question is, was this a three-family when it was constructed, or at the very least when zoning limiting to two units was implemented? But in this case, it's been since the construction in 1899 that this has been three families. So with that, I would ask that the board make a determination that this is actually a three-family, a pre-existing nonconforming use as a three-family, and therefore the building permits could be issued.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask, Chris, did you talk with Paul about this?
Yeah.
I have an email, but I'd rather if you wouldn't mind speaking to what Paul thought.
Sure, sure. I spoke to Paul, and my own knowledge, I can speak to this issue. I think the council did a good job explaining really what is before this board. It's really an evidentiary finding by this board to make a determination whether this has always been a three-family structure, and it's always been used as a three-family structure since the adoption of zoning in Chelmsford, and it's consistently been used as a three-family. There can't be any two years of abandonment. And it's really up to the board to look at all the evidence and make a determination. Oftentimes with these types of cases, we like to see assessor's records throughout the years that show that it's... And the council's right, that is not... Nothing here really is definite. It's sort of a gathering of all the information in totality to make a decision. There's not one thing that makes something certain, and certainly in this case, just because the structure is... May have been set up that way doesn't necessarily mean it's been used. But we like to look at assessor's records, voting records, affidavits from former... For former units. But ultimately, the burden is on the applicant to show that there has been consistent use as a three-family, and this has always been a pre-existing nonconforming use protected under 48, section 6, and under your bylaw, which I think is section 8B. So that's really what the determination is.
Okay. Thank you.
Frank, can we hear from Jose?
Yeah. I think we ought to go. Jose, would you like to just give us your thoughts on this and what you found from your...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Negron. Based on my findings and based on the assessor's records, it's been that the addressing question has been a two-family. We don't have any records that it was a three-family. I met with Brian on site just to go, and I usually do preliminary inspections. And just for the records, I just want to make a correction. A building permit has not been denied from... On my part, Brian asked me just to give him a denial so that he could be before this board for the use of the third unit. So based on our records and on our research, it has always been a two-family structure.
I mean, I did look at the layout of it, and we can certainly look at that even now. But I mean, doesn't it lend itself to the three... So I don't think it was not used as a rental property.
One other determining factor, that's why I met with Brian on site, and I don't know if Brian wants to talk on the matter. My understanding is that the utilities from the attic are connected, have been connected to the second floor. So therefore, it's not an independent unit as such.
So there's two meters, two electrical meters?
Brian, can you clarify on that?
There's two electrical meters, yeah. So they've always used the... What I was told, the second and third-floor unit, they just paid, you know, the owner paid the utilities, and they were just on the same... The first floor was always separate.
Okay.
The access from the third floor is not through the second floor, though. Like, you can't...
If I recall, I think the attic has their own two means of egresses. If I recall correct.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at this plan. It's showing two stairways. One appears to be a common stairway that's isolated. You come into the... You come into the unit or the property. You're on the first floor. You can enter the unit or go up a set of switchback stairs. The second floor, there's a single door. It goes up another set of switchback stairs to the third floor, but the two don't combine. So there are three separate units. Is that what you found? I mean, that's what the architects' plans show, a common stairway with three entrances.
You're asking me if I found three separate units?
I guess... I looked at the plan earlier, and it appeared to me there was a common stairway.
There appears to be three separate units. The attic unit is tied in to the second-floor unit. That's why he's got two electric meters.
Right. The electrical, I think, is clearly...
So we could... I couldn't substantiate... I couldn't find any records to demet a three-family building.
Did you find any that showed it was a two?
It has been by the assessor's office. It has been assessed, taxed as a two-family structure.
So they've always considered it a two-family?
Yes, sir.
But they are isolated apartments?
Again, I don't know how they used the structure before Brian bought it.
Yes, no, I understand. I think that's what the architect was trying to answer, was the architect felt that it was built the way it was built once. There wasn't an addition later.
It appears to be... It appears to be built that way from... When I went and walked the property with Brian, we went to each floor, and to my judgment, it appears that the entire building was designed and built...
Built at one specific time, which we...
One specific... Yes, sir.
Believe was 1899, when it was first built.
I don't recall.
That's what I just wrote down, so I'm gonna go with it. I did have Paul's letter, which I was putting a lot of weight on Paul Haverty's, and he said, to quote, "If the property owner is able to establish that a three-family use commenced before zoning was adopted in Chelmsford prohibiting three families in this zoning district," which would have meant it was created before 1938, I believe.
Yeah.
Then this would be a three-family, even though it sits in an RC. But the proof is to prove that. The trick, if you would, is to prove that.
Are there mailing addresses or anything that show that it was, you know, used that way? Like, were different?
No. Like I said, the people who owned it had owned it for like 85 years, and I think they just kind of kept it that way. It didn't work for them.
Just an informal...
Yeah.
But the proof has to be that it didn't lapse for two years. How can...
Well, we don't have any evidence that it did, so I don't know how we could prove that in 100-plus years it never lapsed. I mean, you can make assumptions, but without anything saying... I don't even know, there was a fire, or there was some reason that it couldn't have...
Which way does it go? Is it guilty until innocent or innocent until guilty? So if we have to prove that it hasn't lapsed, then it's denied unless you can prove it hasn't lapsed. Is that the correct...
Yeah, it is. Typically, when you see these cases in courts, it's up for the applicant's burden to prove that it's always been used as such. To the chairman's point, there is an interesting case law, and I think it's an interesting question about the structure itself. Although, again, it comes back to that point with it's on the applicant. It's the burden of the applicant to prove that it's always been used as a three-family.
If I could just address that. In my experience, a lot of the times these questions come up about, you know, interruption of use or if it's been abandoned after two years. The most common I've seen is, for example, if you have a commercial use, a storefront for, say, in a residential district, and if the store closes, you know it's not being used commercially for two years. That's easy to determine. I think it would almost be impossible to determine one way or the other over 120 years whether you've had occupants in each of the three floors. I think a reasonable inference is if, as the building commissioner concedes, this was constructed, and as the architect says, it was constructed as three units in 1899, there would be an economic incentive for the owner to rent all three. Now, there's obviously gonna be periods of time when a three-unit property is vacant, a tenant goes out, a tenant comes in. I don't have rent logs going back 80 years, 100 years. Obviously, you would never be able to prove that. But I think the reasonable inference, and it's fair to make an inference from the evidence before you, if it was constructed as three, the owner would have every incentive to rent all three. It just makes sense, and that's... I would submit a reasonable inference to get you over that issue you're raising. And I understand what you're saying. Which way do you go if you can't prove it? But you can base your determination on an inference that's reasonable under the circumstances. And I would submit that it's reasonable under these circumstances to conclude that if it's been three units for 120 years, the owner's always had the incentive to rent it, and it hasn't been abandoned. And with respect to the utilities, that did come up. There's actually one water meter, I'm told, and there was two electric meters. There is gas on the first, the third floor. You can still see the little fixture. I mean, I assume as time went on, from the 1899 time it was built...
Changes were made in the...
Yeah, you know, one pipe might have gone in for the gas. One might have gone in for the water. Maybe two went in for the electric. It's not uncommon for a landlord over the years... Well, now with utility prices what they are, it might not be common, but over the years, for a landlord to charge rent and to cover utilities, that's not uncommon. I don't think it's determinative.
It used to be pretty common. You didn't get that separate bill.
Yeah, I just... My point is that would not be determinative.
Any further questions from the board? I don't think we have any letters because it's an appeal. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor or opposition to this Seeing none, I do have some letters. And this is Mr. Negron's denial letter. "Mr. Welbrenner, as per our record, appears to structure in question as a two-family dwelling built in 1899 and in the RC District. 195-13 Conversion of Dwelling Use Does Not Allow For Three-Family Conversions. You have the right to appeal my research and interpretation with the Board of Appeals within 30 days of receiving this notice." And I guess the root was not to appeal, but to just question the denial letter itself. And I have a letter with no comments from Chelmsford Water. It was determined we have one water meter for the whole home. The police have no comments. And I believe this is engineering. It is. This office has no comments, and the health department has no comments. Seeing no further questions from the audience, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Are you sure we're not gonna have any more questions, Brian?
I'm not sure, but if no one asks them, I'm pretty much at a loss as to what to do.
The only thing that bothers me is...
You're welcome to ask questions. Shall we just close it to the public? Do you want to continue?
Yeah, let's just... You said you had proof that it was a three-family. Well, everything that you read with the building permits, you said it was all blank. I mean, how's that gonna prove anything?
Well, my proof is clearly the letter from the architect, and I think the concession from the building commissioner that everything appears to have been constructed at once in 1899 with separate entrances for each of the three units. That, I think, is pretty compelling evidence that this is a three-family and it has been since 1899. My point in looking at those building commissioner... The building file applications was, nobody's ever said this was two-family. You can't rule one way or the other. You have six permit applications. Not once did anyone say it was two-family. Now, they didn't say three, but nobody said two either. And I think my whole point was that, you know, the building commissioner has a difficult job. You know, he's looking through records. He hasn't lived here for 120 years to, you know, tell you what's been going on there. He's looking at records. Those records weren't determinative from building permits that were issued. I think the best evidence you have is the architect's signed and stamped letter, and that's consistent with what the building commissioner said. This was built in 1899.
The architect's letter shows me that it was built that way in 1899, and that's...
As a three-family, yes. So it's been used as a three-family since 1899, decades before zoning.
I don't think you can get that from the architect's letter. The architect's letter said that it was built that way, but it... Not that this is the case, but it literally could have been built that way and walked away from for 122 years and then rediscovered, and the architect's letter would have just examined what it looks like today and going back and saying, "Well, I believe it was built that way back in 1899."
I guess in that neighborhood with multifamilies that are not uncommon, I would respectfully say that's not necessarily a fair inference to make from that letter.
I know I'm being extreme, but I'm just saying, that's a point in time.
Who would have a three-family and not rent it? I mean, it just... It makes sense. It's an impossible burden to place upon someone to say, "This has been a three-family," because I can go back 120 years and I have rent rolls from every tenant. You just can't get records like that. You have to go by inferences from facts that we know today.
Is there anything from the sewer department that would give us any inclination?
We did not get... And do not typically get a letter from sewer. But no, there wouldn't... I mean, that could work any number of ways. One could come out from many, many homes, one man. It's typically going into a single apartment.
If you're adding bedrooms, that's... What's the deal with that right now? You know, there's a mortuary on that.
If we were trying to do that now, there would be a question about it. There would be some concerns.
Where there's these plans show that...
Yeah, I thought her point was, to my interpretation, that she felt this had been built the way it sits right now. Someone didn't build two apartments and then add a third at any point in the future. She felt what was built was built in 1899.
But whether or not it was used that way, there's still, like you said, there's no proof of anything besides...
And the statements from the owner saying it was a three-family. The statements from the owner saying, "My dad rented it out as well."
There's no rental checks or anything like that.
No, I don't have that, and, you know, the old owner...
Any way to get any of that from them?
Well, the old owner had had it for a number of years. You know, understandably, they didn't want to get involved. I mean, you know, if you're getting assessed as two-family, it's three. Maybe they were concerned there might be some blowback to them. I don't know, but basically, I can report to you what Mr. Welbrenner was told on a couple of occasions.
I'm just looking for if there's evidence, right? So if you could came in and said, "Hey, here's, you know, rental checks from A, B, and C going back two years ago." It's proof, right? That's what your job right now is, burden of proof, right?
Yeah, and it can be from inferences as well as direct evidence like that.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, that's...
I'm going with what we have here from an old structure. Inferences. I think they're fair, and I think they're reasonable to be made. I understand what you're saying, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't... I mean, I don't really blame the previous owner from just...
No, right.
But I do think it would be very helpful to have some of that information. I mean, if I had a three-family, I'd be renting it as a three-family.
Sure.
I think anyone who's in the business of being a landlord would do that, but...
Yeah, but if you had some sort of problem with your third apartment and you had to go get it overhauled, fixed, repaired, you would not necessarily rent that at the time when you were trying to get it repaired, so there could be a... Or you could put your son up there for, you know...
But to that, you know, an apartment doesn't have to charge rent. If you put your son in there, it would still be a separate apartment. I'm not trying really to flavor this. I just thought... I looked at it very differently before we've gone through this, so I, you know, I kind of took what Paul said as to heart, and he was... You know, the burden of proof is interesting to figure out how to prove that it was. I think I believe it was a three-family when it was built. I don't know why I would ever revert to a two, even with the advent of zoning, if it wasn't, if you didn't need to. There certain weren't, there's no leather that says you have to have a two-family home here, because they went to zoning.
Yeah, in my mind, I agree that it was built as a three-family. It's the, it's the relatively continuous use that's a, uh...
A question that, that...
Fluffy, cloudy thing that I don't...
We're not seeing the burden of proof for...
Yeah, I...
I, I guess I'm only struggling because we're not seeing the burden of proof against, but, but I do know, you know, chicken or egg, so I don't know how that works.
If, if we had to say that, you know, the building commissioner had to have the burden of proof that it, um, was not continually rented, I'd say, well, he hasn't proved that, so it's easy to... But if we flip it and say the burden of proof has to come in to say that it has been continually used, um, you know, there's, there's inferences, there's the one guy owning it for eighty-five years, there's, well, why wouldn't you rent it? Which, which all makes sense, but it's not...
Certainly not proof.
Yes.
Right.
Well, perhaps town council could suggest to you what an inference is and how it plays into fact. A lot of times, cases are proved on inferences, which, um...
Sure, I mean, I, I... Like I said, these types of cases, what, um, the structure is part of the totality of evidence that we take in. And one of the things we look like in cases like this is, is there a kitchen in there? Is there a stove, a separate stove in each floor, uh, that makes, makes it look like, uh, it was three separate units? Uh, but other types of evidence that we like to see, again, uh, is there, there needs to be... There's usually more paperwork that creates a, a train of evidence that shows, whether that's assessors' records, voting logs, affidavits from previous owners that show a continuous use of, of three families. Uh, but, but the council is correct, uh, the fact that the structure is built as a three-family, uh, i- is not definite. It's not creative, but it's just part of the totality of evidence that makes your job difficult.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really, I'm not sure what the, uh, I mean, there certainly are kitchens, bathrooms, and bedrooms on every level, it's, it's pretty clear.
When was that kitchen put in, in the third floor, do you know?
No idea.
I think things were updated over time, but it, it looks... So, the, the third floor, and every floor there has two sets of stairways going to each unit. So the third floor apartment has a back, uh, a back set of stairs, and then one from the front that go all the way up. The second floor has a side entrance, and another one from the front. The first floor has one from the front, and one from the back of the house. So the always, the, the staircases are all original to the house, you know, so to me, the point, why, why would they put two sets of staircases up to the third floor? That wasn't what it's going to be used for.
There's a point.
The kitchens are underneath each other, going all the way through. Not that even if you added one, uh, it wouldn't, you know, you might find that the easiest place to put one, but they are. What to do, what to do?
From my point of view, I'm not looking for a hundred and twenty-three years of, of rent checks, but if there was something that said, someone lived there in nineteen thirty, someone else lived there in nineteen forty-eight, someone else lived there in nineteen... But it's, there's, there's...
I, I think this gentleman, you don't have any records, and I assume the...
Just from what I was told by the homeowner.
He's not looking to explain his finances to anyone, yeah. Understandably, I guess I'm gonna...
When I originally looked at the property years ago, uh, you know, I've been doing work for them in Dunsborough, and, uh... And I, I think I went over there to get something, and, you know, he just explained that, you know, they've been living there, you know, the families have been in and out, and at that time, he said, you know, you know, a long-term tenant on the third floor. Uh, I believe his father was on the first floor, that they were kind of in that control from, uh, from Dunsborough at that point, so...
Well, to your point, I guess that would be, if that was, conversation was twenty-five years ago, and he had a fifteen-year tenant, you're going back forty years where the third floor was occupied with a long-term tenant.
Any further thoughts?
Um, my, my only thought, um, is that obviously, the house was built all at the same time, it wasn't added on. But my thought is that, that second, the second family, and the two-family, um, that had extra bedrooms on the third floor, and, um, I guess they just liked extra staircases back, back when they built the house. So I'm just thinking that everything was built as a two-family, and the three-family came about, I don't know when.
What about this, the kitchen?
I would disagree with, uh, the kitchen's an unknown, of course, but I think that the...
I grew up on Gay Street, and, uh, my, my family lived in our four-family there, which is an RC zone. And there's two other four families, right behind this thing I quickly have, there's a four-family in the RC zone. Uh, they're all over out here.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's not anything, anything new, it was just when someone was put in.
Right.
I, I, I mean, looking at the, the layout and, and what the architect, I don't think they would, you need two egresses for each apartment. There's two stairways, which is...
Got me confused.
Something that probably wouldn't be spent if they didn't need it.
Right.
That, that really is, is, to me, kind of important. Um, whether the kitchen was added or not, it was added directly over the second-floor kitchen. Uh, not that it couldn't have been, but it sort of lays itself out to that, you know, there's the living room, dining, kitchen, as you would expect to see it. I'm torn.
Me too.
Can I say something?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
I'm not sure what I'm saying, it's my first night.
So you can ask all the questions you would like. Uh, what you won't be able to do is vote, because we have a board, a board of five. You're welcome to ask any questions you see, absolutely.
More than anything else. I would put a great deal of weight on this letter from the architect, uh, because it does seem like it was built originally as a three-family. The other thing is, you don't need to track rent checks, or receipts, or contracts, or anything like that. I, I know from personal experience, it's not unusual for someone to rent a second floor, then use the third floor as part of it. They pay a little more rent, but use the third floor as storage, or extra family space. Um, and I know this has happened.
Oh, certainly.
You know, quite a bit.
But if you could rent it out as a third, wouldn't that make more economic sense?
Sure, but that's not our call. You know, the, you know, and the other thing is...
Money as it is, we do have a call.
But whether or not it's been, you know, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, maybe I'm not using the right words, just because it's not rented, per se, doesn't mean it's not been in use, which would cover your two, two-year vacancy requirement. The, uh...
Couldn't like, the youth still be like, I have a big family, so I'm gonna rent the second and third floor, so I'm gonna have to need...
A family of five, or seven, or any...
I need four bedrooms, so we're gonna use these top two floors, and it's still a two-family.
Sure, when I say I know what I'm talking about, I, I had a three-family, and I rented out the second and third floor to the same family. And they, they were legit, they had stair, two stairways, two egresses, if you will, and, uh, kitchen a little bit. But the family that took the second floor offered me more rent to take the third floor along with the second floor. So the argument that it needs to be continuously rented, you're not gonna be able to find that information even if you had the paperwork. And to say it doesn't make sense to rent it out if you can get more money, who knows? Maybe he was independently wealthy and didn't care about the money.
Yeah, no, that's an assumption, there's a lot of assumptions here today, obviously.
If the building was built in eighteen ninety-nine, which is an era none of us remember, um...
Brian does.
I was young.
I'm getting close. You know, things were different then, it was a different time. And when the zoning laws came in in nineteen thirty-eight, um, this would have been grandfathered in, assuming it was continuous use. But there's no way to track that use.
There, there's no actual document that says we're making this, you know, there's no, there's nothing filed, nor, I've never heard of that, I don't think.
We're not...
Would you expect to see a document, Jose, in the file, saying that this is indeed a three-family unit, uh, at the, at the advent of zoning? Would that have been an expectation you would have had?
Like I said, uh, and like you said before, that the applicant needs to kind of prove that it was used as a three-family. Unfortunately, um, on our end, if we don't see the evidence, we can't just deem it a three-family. Um, and just to be fair to the applicant, you know, the, like I said earlier, you walk inside, and the third floor has the means of egresses, and it seems that it was built that way.
If this was considered a three, it'd be perfectly legal as a three-family. If they, if he came to you and said, I have this three-family, uh, in a multifamily zoning, this would be a perfectly legal apartment.
If he can prove that it was used, yes, as a separate unit, then it will be deemed grandfathered as a three-family.
Okay.
Doesn't the post office keep records of things, like of addresses with units as well?
I, I don't honestly know, if, uh, the applicant would like to...
I made a records request of the assessors, they only go back, I think, ten years, seven years. Uh, Mr. Reen didn't have anything beyond that, I mean, it's...
The postal service.
I did not make a request at a postal service, although the assessors...
If you'd like to continue and look into that, uh, I mean, I think it, it, I, I think some encouragement would be helpful here, is to, uh, try to document, uh... I, I, I understand, uh, possibly the mentality of people that sell properties, they're done with it, they don't want any more confusion, or headaches, so they may be reluctant to help with rent checks, and maybe they just didn't keep those files either, if they're selling the property, everything goes. I, I don't know, but if you'd like, uh, you could continue and, and try to find some evidence that would help, uh, bolster the case a little.
If that would help, we could certainly do a search for that, if that would help the board. Um, you know, we're just looking to have three units. Why take away an affordable apartment in, in the community? I mean, if, we're hung up on whether or not there's enough evidence that someone didn't abandon the use for more than two years at some point.
I, I mean, I honestly think that's an impossible task.
I, you know, I can...
I just feel we just have no evidence that it was, you know, if we could find a person that was willing to write a letter. I, I'm speaking for myself, more, more than the board, of course, but...
Well, if the board would think that would be helpful, and I'm getting the sense it clearly is, you know, from some of your comments, I, I can certainly dig deeper and see what I can find. Um, I guess I just wasn't optimistic, but we can certainly try again.
With the postal, that's probably a pretty good, right?
Yeah, I mean, I...
Because they would keep a record.
I think, I, I think they do, I don't know for sure, I've never done it, but...
I, I guess it'd certainly be worth an ask.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to do that.
What, what might be more accessible is, is actually voting records, something that I did in a similar step situation when I was on the other side. And I was able to find voting records of people who were apartment one, two, and three.
There you go.
And, and use that to, to show evidence.
I mean, I don't have any doubt, and I, I, I get the sense you, there's evidence here that this was built as a three-family. Am I right that the issue is the concern that was it always used as a three-family? I mean, that's...
That's my concern, I think it was built as a three-family, is based on the architect's letter and the way it looks. But the problem is, is that there's not enough substantial evidence to show that it has been used as that.
Okay.
Just the assessor's records kind of contradict it, so...
Yeah, we can certainly look for, I mean, all I have at this point is that testimony of the former owner reported to the, uh, current owner that it was a three-family, they had a long-term tenant. I can see if I can substantiate any of those, I can check any more public records.
Maybe you could be encouraged to say how helpful it would be if, if he did have something to, uh, you know...
Well, that would help the board, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to continue, ask for continuance.
Maybe the name of a, a previous tenant that they would, uh, write a letter saying that they were tenants in apartment three, two, and one, if that's, you know, I mean, it... It, it would be nice to have something, because we really have, have very little in this regard.
No, I understand.
The address is ninety-four, ninety-six, is there a ninety-five in between there? I'm not trying to be obnoxious, but I mean, is there anything? Trying to find something, right? Or a ninety-four B, or a ninety-four...
Actually, I, I think the assessors' record indicated it was ninety-four, and then they wanted it ninety-four, ninety-six, uh, you know, so...
Because it was considered two by then.
Multifamily, yeah, by then it was zoned two-family, so I guess...
Okay.
I, I don't doubt, I don't blame the former owner for not wanting to...
No, no, right.
After it's been assessed as a two-family for all those years, to now say, oh, it was three, you know?
Right, 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 yep.
Um, but we can certainly look and see, make another effort to do that. If that, if the board's willing to do that, I'd be happy to...
Well, we can certainly continue, uh, we're gonna continue until September...
Seventh.
Seventh, is it?
September seventh.
Uh, we'll be missing the August, well-deserved break.
I will make a motion to continue ninety-four, ninety-six Princeton Street to September seventh of twenty twenty-three.
And the public hearing is still open?
Yes.
Can I get a second? Second by Peter, all in favor?
Yes.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, I really felt very differently coming in than I do now, so I guess, uh, you, that's the whole point of the hearing, to get the information.
There's gotta be something that shows records, right?
There's gotta be. Or there is.
Some of these guys don't, right, that may, yeah, but some, some of these guys, they're not giving up nothing the old time, they're not...
You're, you're hanging your hat on whether or not there are records, and I, and there doesn't necessarily have to be records. That's, was part of the point I was trying to make.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree, especially, it, it could have always been the cash deal, yeah, there's a million things, so you, you just don't know the situation.
Like there to be something.
It has, there's something we can look at. All right, the next public hearing is fifteen Chatham Road. The owner is Scott Durkin, requesting a special permit under the zoning bylaw section one ninety-five, six-point-one, for the construction of addition for a limited accessory apartment, to reissue, reissue a previously approved special permit under the one ninety-five eight nonconformity that granted a reduction in the side setback requirement, and any other relief deemed necessary. This property is located in the RB District. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Ed Greaves, and I'm representing Scott. And, um, uh, this was issued before in two thousand nineteen, like you just said, um...
Wait, just get your address in as well?
Seven Fleetwood Drive. I'm actually one of his neighbors.
Perfect.
Yeah. Okay, um, the original, uh, item that was approved in two thousand nineteen was, I believe it was a thousand ninety square feet, and they're, they're adding a second story to the dwelling. And it's, uh, it, you allow seven hundred and fifty square feet, and it comes out a little under nine hundred, it's a little bit over.
Um, are you familiar with how we calculate the size of the unit? Is there a stairway in, in that space?
Yes, I did deduct the stairway.
You did, okay, just, just trying to save you some...
I was wondering, can you actually deduct the width of the wall, the six-inch wall going around the perimeter of the addition?
Uh, I think that it's the room sizes we would be satisfied with, I would imagine.
Yeah.
So yes, you could technically deduct the width of the walls.
Is that another six?
Uh, we are entryways, stairways, and common spaces can be built and added to, but not considered part of the in-law.
Okay.
Or the LLA.
Yeah, um, the, the way he designed it with me, we have the entrance door on the side of the garage, so it doesn't look like a two-family. Yeah, I, I have affidavits from, uh, eleven Chatham and seventeen Chatham stating they've reviewed the plans, uh, they fully accept everything, and, uh, I actually have the gentleman across the street at twelve Chatham that did the same thing.
Okay.
And, um...
We'd be glad to take those letters, if that, uh...
I did give them to, uh...
Oh, we have them, okay. I think they're here, yeah.
Yeah. You might be missing eleven. I think she might have left on vacation before I got that to her.
Just a question about what you said, Brian. Your, when you do square footage calculations as a builder and architect, don't you count, like, you start from the exterior of the house, and the walls count, right?
Uh, I, I don't know how they calculate that, I, I think that we've always kind of been what size of the rooms, but we're not, you know, I mean, I don't think the wall width is gonna be a dramatic...
I just want to be consistent, I don't want to...
Okay.
Subtract walls for one person, and then...
Yep.
Give it to somebody else, so we should...
But, well, we can issue a waiver for any size LLA. So if we want to just go by the exterior dimensions, and then remove the stairways, and entryways, and common areas, we can get that number and decide whether that's close enough to the seven fifty, uh, or problematic. I, I just wasn't aware if he had had a breakdown of what sizes we required, so...
I've just always assumed that the architects do it a standard way on their drawing, and I don't want to follow after them and subtract other things out, because...
Right.
Then we're not doing what we've done before.
Somewhere we're near fifty or a hundred feet, we're not crazy if, I think, you took all the walls. But there's only seven fifty to start with, you can't... You can't do that much wall spade.
Yeah. Well, I, I, it, it comes out to 924, and I subtracted 30 feet for the stairway. And if you added up all the perimeter walls on the, on the LAA, it's 62 square feet.
How, how did you get to 30 for the stairway? It's, would be three by 12, I would think.
Three by 10 is what it was going to be.
Okay, so it's just not a full height?
There's 13 steps, 12 rises. That's a standard nine-foot hole.
So, you know, and you can tell me how you feel, Steve. I would think that the landing at the stairway is also part of the stairs.
Right, I didn't add that in, and that's probably nine square feet.
Yeah. The goal is to get to 750. I don't think we're going to see that anyways. That's just.
Well, we're, we're close, you know?
You said something was approved in 2019?
Yes.
That was what?
It was a 1,090 square foot addition, two-car garage with living space.
And that was not built?
It was not built. It was never recorded at the registry of deeds.
Okay.
But again, they weren't doing an LLA.
Yeah, right.
I think it goes to include the side setback that was allowed in the original.
Yes, that didn't change.
Right, right, okay.
So who's going to be living in the LLA, LAA?
It's his, his mother-in-law. She's a Cambridge resident, and she'd like to move to Chester to see her, her grandkids, you know? I did have a letter of intent, which Becky should have had in there somewhere.
Hey, Brian, I'm reading this, and should that have been a variance with the setbacks?
The original?
Can you pull it for me?
This one? This one is what you have? Previously?
You wanted to see the original special permit.
Yeah, the original one. You were here, Nancy, too.
I see that. Don't remember it.
I don't remember either.
I have a copy if you'd like to read it.
I, I, we have it.
Okay.
Do we have the plan for that? Well, you know, Charlie, it was granted as a special permit. What do you want to do, go backwards?
No, we're, we're granting it again, right?
We were granting the setback on the sideline, the new setback, which is, is what, what is that now? The setback going to be?
Is it 12.6?
12.6, I believe, yeah.
It's 12.6 on the right-hand side.
Yes.
In the front, and that's the back corner, and the front corner is 18 feet.
Right.
Right, on the plan that you've submitted here, yeah.
It's an RB district, so it should have been 25, I think.
Right. Would have to be 20 for the special permit, correct?
If it's 25, is the right setback. I'm just going to look at the RB and make sure about that, yeah?
It is.
Yes, 25. Is this RB? Is this the RB?
Why did we grant a special permit to 12.5?
It had to be something else.
It's RB.
Is it grant, is there rock or stone, like?
Nope.
No?
Nothing, no. Old neighborhood sand.
Like most of the Chancellors. Not a lot of it.
Not that it would matter, but it's in the corner of the.
Lot shape or?
But it still goes to variance. We wouldn't have granted a special permit.
That's the only thing that's confusing me here.
I'm, I'm trying to remember, which I don't.
And I don't.
But I don't even see the logic of it that we would have gone with a special permit.
You got voted on it. Come on, boys.
Sorry, it was a long time ago.
Was, was it existing? Was there a, that same setback existing now?
It, it hasn't changed. That's what we're, we're requesting the same size.
It would have been like 34 before.
That was never built, correct?
Right.
The structure was never built, so your setback now is not 34.
It would be. They, they, they have 12.6, and they're putting something that's 24 feet on there.
Right.
Yeah, it's more than.
It would have been like 36 or?
36.6.
The front.
Was there a deck or a porch there or something?
Nope.
I don't think in 2019 we were doing it any differently.
I'm trying to see where it says special per, oh, it does say special permit, first line.
All right, here are the minutes from then.
I could ask Greg while he was here.
Actually, Mr. Durkin told me you were very helpful.
He was helpful?
Yeah, he, he helped him through it.
He's always helpful.
I'm helpful, Doug.
There's nothing in there about it.
If there are mistakes, you blame it on the chairman.
Every time. I wonder if I was.
It says, Brian, read each check, right?
That's one opinion.
We voted 5-0.
Yeah, we gotta got five, five pieces of wood in here.
Burton of Poof says you are the chair.
There's nothing in there.
I have to look at that. I have to look at that again. I don't understand that.
So you were even on board with that one?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I guess the.
I voted for it.
Yeah. That also what was done, if it wasn't built or acted upon, it has to be.
It's, it's probably expired, it's 2019.
It's expired, so it's like it never happened.
Because it wasn't recorded.
Yeah, so does it really matter whatever happened then? Because it's, it's coming in front of us now as a, a brand-new application with some history, but we have to consider it.
But I think we'd have to consider it a variance at this point.
Yeah, so it can't be a special permit.
Do we have, maybe, a certified plot plan?
We do.
On the, the agenda from then, it called a special permit as well. It wasn't just a.
It's a nonconforming structure. Does that change it?
Yeah, i- i- if I may, is, is that the issue you're thinking about the setback that you're approving? You're right that this, if this previous special permit has expired, it's like you're starting over again, and that's the way you have to approach this. Having said that, I should be more familiar with the Chancellors zoning by, bylaws, but I, I believe if it's a pre-existing nonconforming structure, you can seek a special permit to extend or alter a, an existing nonconforming structure, right?
What's the?
Yeah, what's the nonconformity?
I thought it would, it could only increase the nonconformity.
The existing nonconformity? It depends what your bylaws say.
I guess the front is already nonconforming because it's 35.6.
Right, it's, it's circled here as a nonconforming structure.
Along the same nonconforming line.
Well, we don't have, well, we have an issue with the frontage, but not the side setback.
Right, but still.
What? The link works?
Which link?
Existing house 35 feet from the front, it should be 40, so that's our nonconformity. From the side setback, it would be 23 and 12, so 37 to the shallower rear corner. And we would have 12 foot 6, which in order to grant a special permit, we would need 20. So we have to consider this a variance.
Yep.
And I think that it wasn't advertised as a variance.
It's a special permits.
So then it would have to be re-advertized as a variance, because that's more restrictive. Do I have that right?
Correct.
Yeah. So this is going to have to be continued, re-advertized as a variance, and unfortunately it's going to make the, the challenge a little harder for you. I think I would recommend that your, your client talk to Greg and, and ask him if he knows why it was a special permit. Three of the four, or three of the five are sitting here, and we don't know why we gave it a special permit. Doesn't make sense to look at it quickly, but he may have notes on that, and it would be very helpful to be able to create you a special permit as opposed to a variance.
Who's Greg?
The owner.
Oh.
Scott. Oh, dear.
You said talk to Greg, who's?
So Greg was the attorney that originally, the gentleman that was here before.
Yep.
Originally applied for Mr. Durkin. He was the attorney. I thought I saw his name on, on something I, I glanced through, the decision. Didn't it say Greg Hallidane here? I thought his name, I saw his name there.
It's just on your mind? Maybe it's the minutes, but I already closed those.
Yeah, maybe I, I just thought I saw his name. I thought that was, I said it would be a good idea if he hadn't left. But you might want to talk to him about why it was a special permit, if he, if he had any counsel, or he recollects why it became a special permit. Because I, I think we're going to have to address it as a variance. That's, that's a little more challenging than a special permit.
Do you want to hold the letters?
What is the actual difference with the variance and the special permit?
You have to have a hardship for a variance, and there are three very specific tenants, which is lot shape, topography, and soil conditions.
Okay.
So to grant a variance, we have to meet one of those three tenants, and I don't know, you know, how that would.
Yeah.
I, I honestly don't know how you got a special permit from what I'm looking at, but when Becky gets back, she can certainly pull up the, you know, the notes, and we can see what it says. But the frontage doesn't get us the side back, the side setback.
Yeah, that, that's clear under section 8D of the bylaw, where it says variance is required when you create an additional nonconformity, it requires a variance.
We really erred in, in making this a, a special permit back then in 2019. Unless there's something we're missing that we're not, we're just not catching up to.
Exactly what I said.
Are, are we clear that the, the required setback is 12.6?
The required setback is 25.
Oh, okay, so that.
The, what he would end up with is 12.6. To go to a special permit, we could go down to 20, which is a 20% reduction in the side setback.
Yeah, this looks like a variance, yeah.
And, Jose, in 2019, were we using a different setback formula based on the age of the home?
No.
It was still the same as it was, yeah?
Maybe from 1961 to today, the side, is that an RB district?
RB, yes.
Yeah, 25 feet?
Yeah, so I think, we're, we're going to look at the notes and see if Becky can find out why it was granted as a special permit.
Yeah.
But it was never recorded. It's all kind of, you know, we have to go by what we have today to work with.
Yeah, the neighbor next door at 11 is at least 12 feet from the property line.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's, but they could have had a variance. I, I don't know.
They didn't. It was just a deck added to the side of the house.
I don't, I don't know.
Jose, that's for you.
Oh, yeah.
Right. I'm honored.
Yep.
That's what he wants.
Look, he points at it. Down the chain it goes, right? All right.
The only thing, Mr. Chairman, I would, is that the applicant should confirm that the special permit has actually lapsed with the tolling period of COVID-19.
Oh, good point.
There may be a scenario where this hasn't been lapsed. I don't know if that would necessarily.
Are you, are you able to look into that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, I know Ed and I had a conversation. It is, he can clarify. It is my understanding that the owner, the applicant, I think she forgot to record the, the special permit. I, I think she went to Florida or?
Yeah, they, they didn't record it.
I think they forgot to, I don't know if that's a reason to reconsider, but for the reason they didn't record it was because she didn't know what to do, and she forgot to record.
You know what I think? Because it would be all right for, for you to see if, if it coincides with the dates. Could you? I don't, I don't quite know how to do that, so.
Yeah, we'll be happy to look into this. It's, it's been a while since.
I know Becky is away, and she would usually be the point for this.
Yeah, I, I cer, we can certainly look into this.
The time.
And then I think I'd like to talk to Paul about the implications if the special permit hadn't lapsed. The assumption is that they're not going to be able to have substantial use within the three years, even if they, if the time period has extended. So we can certainly, certainly look into that.
Okay, we'll see if that's, it's necessary to go for a variance. I mean, after granting it, I, I feel bad that we'd have to rescind it. I don't know, we're not getting.
We're not rescinding it. It would never.
They don't have.
I guess, I guess we wouldn't be technically, but.
Hadn't been recorded, so.
Strike two. I think I'll wait on the letters and just, just let, we'll, we'll postpone it till September 7th and see what we can do about moving that ahead. It may, it may be as simple as coming back again, and we can grant the special, or the special permit would still be in play. And I think it was, it was about two and a half years was the COVID restriction.
Yeah, it was a long time. When you do the calculation, it, you end up getting a lot of time, and this looks like it was approved in March of 2015, 2019.
2019, yeah.
Yeah, so it would, it would get the benefit of the tolling period, yeah.
Yeah. So this hope.
Yeah. Okay, so I got to come back September?
Oh, wait.
Yes, September 7th.
And we'll certainly be in touch and let you know what we figured out. I mean, the, the best scenario will be that we can use the time that COVID stopped the clock for, and your special permit is still valid because it's been issued. I certainly wouldn't hesitate to try to record that ASAP and.
Right.
You know, see, see how that works. I mean, it's.
What, try to record it now?
I would.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, it's relatively inexpensive for the, for, with the gain.
I was surprised you didn't do it, to be honest.
Yeah, it's, it's a simple task, you know, it's pretty quick. But you could really get it done tomorrow if you, you know, have the decision, and if not, I think Becky could get it, who was on vacation this week.
Yeah.
She'll be back Monday, the 10th, I believe.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion.
And we're going to just continue this. You know, you're free to go, but that's what's going to happen here.
Yeah.
If I could get a motion to continue an open public hearing.
I will make a motion to continue 15 Chatham Road to September 7th, 2023, keeping the meeting open.
Second.
Second by Steve, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
What are we going to do with Ms. Jamie now?
Does anybody have her number?
Do you do it with four?
Or no?
You can't send, you're, you're not qualified.
We can't hear it, though.
The, the problem we have, we don't have a board member. Do you have her number?
Me? No.
I don't have it either, I don't have her phone number.
Wouldn't I qualify?
Uh, no, sir, because it's already had public hearings, and there's been, actually, you weren't on the board when they, when they were heard.
This is for the continue.
Um, if you do miss one, you can, uh, watch it on video and then sign a mullin statement allowing you to do that, but you weren't on the board when they originated out of this.
Yeah, I was just, and brought, and the same question came up, and there's no definitive answer. Uh, so, so the advice is not to allow, uh, associate members who were not on the board who missed the, who missed the meeting.
I think she, I think she has a number.
Do you have her number? Do we have?
She does.
Yeah, somebody's got her number, that's good.
But we might need Charlie then.
Want a car, Charlie?
I left my phone in the car.
Oh, come on.
Is that Jamie's number?
Yeah.
Hold on, one second.
Two, five, four. Hold on.
Nine, seven, eight, two, five, four.
Nine, eight, nine, that's what I have for Jamie. Everyone has their number now.
Jamie, Jamie, Jamie. She's gonna direct her to voicemail.
Sounds good.
Who, who? Let's go and direct her to voicemail.
Can you go with four or no?
Hey, Jamie, it's Brian Reedy. Sitting here at the Board of Appeals. Hi. Are you gonna be joining us tonight? I'm good. Yeah. Are you, are you?
Yeah.
You, eh?
So we have four.
Okay, don't, don't get hurt coming here. But we'll be waiting for you. Okay, okay. Uh, ten past eight, but we did a couple other things before. Okay, we'll wait for you. Don't, don't speed, just get here safely.
As you can.
Okay. Ms. Brown will be joining us. She said seven minutes, I hope she's, uh, a little slower than that, so, uh, we can do the minutes.
Well, we have a couple we have to continue, so.
Uh, we can do that too, yeah, yeah, okay. Wow, I just feel this is such a failure. You were lost without them. I would've called her earlier, but really.
Okay. So we have to withdraw Woodbine.
So I have a request to withdraw.
Yes.
Forty-two Woodbine Street, Michael J. Welch, on behalf of Richard and Denise Roberts, requesting a special permit under one ninety-five six one for the construction of an addition for a limited accessory apartment and any other relief deemed necessary. The property is located in the residential B district. I have a request to withdraw, if I could get a motion.
Motion to withdraw the.
I suppose without prejudice.
Application for special permit for forty-two Woodbine Street for the construction of an LAA without prejudice.
Second.
Second. By Nancy, all in favor? Aye. Uh, Roger will be voting. Unanimous. Thank goodness you came. Uh, we also have eleven Rainbow Avenue, Sarah and Gary Brown are requesting a special permit under Section one ninety-five six one for a limited accessory apartment, LLA, and variances for the side setback requirement for the maximum building lot coverage and floor area ratio and any other reliefs deemed necessary. This property is located in the RB district. I have a request for continuation till September seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Is there any issue with dates on that, or are there any extension times for, for special permits, or is that only for?
I believe Becky has worried that, but, uh, this has been going on almost a year now. This was the one that started the whole, uh, whole zoning change thing some way ago. It was like September or something.
And where they added on.
So I'm assuming that they have continued this, but without Becky to tell me, I don't know.
See if there's. Yes, it does.
Okay.
Um, June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, dear members of the Board of Appeals, please allow this letter to serve as a further request for postponement of this matter through September twenty twenty-three. The applicant agrees that the time period within which the board is to issue decision is hereby extended for a period of sixty days after the hearing is concluded. I trust this satisfies the board's needs. Sincerely, Douglas Housler.
I can move to continue eleven Rainbow Ave until September, what, sixth?
Seven.
Seventh?
Seven.
September seventh?
Second.
Second by Pete, all in favor? Aye. And we can do the minutes. The May meeting minutes?
There were a lot of them.
Any questions or corrections?
I didn't review them.
What?
I was talking on you. I gotta get ready for all this. My water. Surely just continue, can he, he can't vote on it, right?
Um. Chris Rod is a new member tonight, would he be able to vote on the minutes?
Uh, uh, no, he would not, yeah.
Okay, so we can't even read, we can get through these.
Should probably push these.
When Jamie arrives, we'll just get him out of the way here after.
Twelve pages of minutes.
Becky did say she was busy doing it.
This is still a part, yeah, this is terrible.
Refreeze this. Guess we should've called Jamie earlier.
Dying in a while, we can prove that. It's a special permit. There's nothing like a patent to possibly last, do you know? It's a special, like, there's nothing.
I think if there was, it should've been in the minutes.
Would've been specifically, yeah, I agree, I agree.
Answer your question.
Yeah.
It was a, it was a special permit. Last time I served on the ZBA, we just revealed the variances. So what exactly is?
So the, it's just a criteria that they set. Um, it depends, if you look at the zoning table of uses, there's a lot of uses that require a special permit, and then under the bylaws, there's a criteria for a special permit. So it's basically whether it's detrimental to the neighborhood, and then there's some other criteria. And you apply that. They don't need to show, uh, har- you know, they don't need to show hardship or unique circumstance or anything like that. It's just whether it's a detriment to the neighborhood or not really.
Okay, and that's all I need here?
Yeah, this, this is the section, right, I have it right out, because that's the next thing out. So this is the criteria for a special permit right there.
Light's closed.
Yeah.
Didn't see you at the parade, Steve.
One ninety-five, one oh three, I can.
Didn't see you.
Sorry.
You're not gone?
Did you see Nancy at the parade?
You sure do. Didn't, huh?
Yes.
Can't tell, but she's telling the truth.
Yeah. He was conducting when we exited and all that.
Yeah. Good parade?
Hmm?
Good parade?
It was.
You got, huh?
Very good job.
Yeah, my last year.
Missed a good time.
I went to stuff on the third, I skipped the fourth.
Um.
Have you gone to the third? That was even beautiful, that was beautiful, Will.
See you at the art show on the third, there, Brian.
I was at the art show on the third floor of the CCA getting chairs, but I did go through and look at it. It was a bit of a moment for me, my mom did the Bedford Arts and Crafts thing on the Fourth of July every year. It was a bit of a flashback, huh, it's quite nice. So there you go. Did you enjoy the art show?
Yeah.
What was your favorite picture?
Always challenging.
This is gonna be good.
I liked the one of Portland Headlight. I liked the one of Portland Headlight.
Oh, yeah?
Up in Cape Elizabeth, Maine.
Really?
Cool. Favorite picture.
Yeah, that's not, uh, this is, this is Chatham.
Looks pretty normal.
But there's, uh, there was a few dark, and so that is the garage, so this must be fifteen. There's no garage. It would be, it would be tight to go to the twelve. I don't think they have twenty-five either.
Are you remembering all those new houses?
No, no.
RB from sixty-one, there's no way it could've been a different setback.
You guys were just soft. Steve's soft.
Yeah, we were giving them a little, like, chick hills, we didn't have steeds.
Hello, my core variance people.
Steeds didn't. Silk, silver.
I don't think so.
Must've been close to the, yeah.
I think I was on the list, though, I thought I was.
Go back to the twenty nineteen.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
The decision.
Come a major guy.
There's gotta be a reason.
The document that they sent, it's not when I was there, thoroughly.
I, I just can't fi- I just can't think of what could possibly be, this is very likely.
Right, right, and they have it downtown, which is.
Genuine downtown.
I hope it falls under that, uh.
Yeah, either.
The time thing there for that guy, that would be just a, then you're done.
For sure.
I don't know, we're missing this part.
You just hate to take something away from somebody.
That's not here.
There was no fault, I mean, but then he didn't record it, it's just, uh.
And there's a bar right in downtown, it's like, we haven't been there yet.
It wasn't originally an LLA, right?
At the time it was not, it was just a two-car garage of space.
Right.
I think that was his intention to pull one in at some point.
Right. Turned it to like a concert venue?
I had talked with him a couple times, I think that was the plan.
The church on the hill on Main Street. It's now a bar.
Church on the hill, you have to talk about the one time at McDonald's, are you?
Well, yes, uh.
There's a church on the hill on Main Street.
It's not my fault.
Yeah, you might not notice it if you're not looking for it.
But Jamie did, you pointed the email away. We are complete.
I apologize profusely, I am so sorry.
Continue the public hearing. Probably not even the worst thing that happened tonight, so don't worry too much. Uh, thirty-six Bartlett Street, William L. Harvey the Third, requesting a special permit under Section one ninety-five five, Use Regulations A four in accordance with Section one ninety-five thirteen, Conversion of Dwelling Units to convert a single-family dwelling existing prior to nineteen thirty-eight into a two-family dwelling and other reliefs deemed necessary. This property is located in the RB district. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett, representing the applicant, uh, S, uh, if I get it right, SGC, LOC, of William Harvey. Mr. Chairman, I was not able to make the last meeting. I did review the YouTube, uh.
The mullin reading, if you would, but I realized it's not your.
Yeah, I did go through the entire hearing that took place at that time, and, you know, certainly, I understand that Mr. Harvey is not gonna win any popularity contests with his neighbors. So that's not a good thing, a bad thing necessarily, in the sense of what we're here for is a request for an applic- application under a duly allowed bylaw, which has been passed through the town meeting, approved, and gone through the Attorney General's office, and approved. And under which the ZBA has, uh, granted, uh, applicants permission to carry out the allowances under that bylaw. Uh, particularly, I know Mr. Harvey had one at sixty-one Carlisle Street, uh, was granted by the town. And we are believed that there's another one on Stedman Street. But, I mean, if you look at the, at the terms of the bylaw, you know, it's for the purposes of taken buildings that were created before nineteen thirty-eight. Large buildings, large residential structures. This property was built in nineteen oh three, so meets that criteria. Uh, it says that the lot has to be at least fifteen hundred square feet. I mean, I'm sorry, fifteen thousand square feet. This is sixty-eight thousand, three hundred eighty-two square feet. So it's a multiple, by my math is right, it'd be more than, uh, four times the underlying requirement. It requires that there be at least six hundred square feet in each of the units. That would be the resultant units, you know, if the permit is granted under bylaws. This will have one unit of one thousand nine hundred eighty-four square feet and one unit of nine hundred ten square feet. So clearly in excess of the, of the bylaw requirements. I know at the last hearing, the question was looking at the, you know, Section one ninety-five, one oh three terms and conditions of, you know, what, what are you looking for under a special permit? And it talks about, you know, community needs, social, economic, community needs. This bylaw was put into place for that purpose. It creates a, a housing, it, it creates a residential unit. It's something that has been approved by the town. If Bartlett Street were not to be included in that bylaw, then they should've had a specific exception to it. But it's not. You know, in terms of the concerns about, uh, you know, well, you're gonna have another car. But, you know, if, if anyone has dealt, I'm sure on the, members of the board have dealt with looking at, uh, you know, traffic reports, and you know that residential uses have negligible, negligible impact upon level of service on any street. And especially addition of a six hundred square foot, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, nine hundred square foot residential unit, that has no negative impact upon that street, that would be negligible along the street. You know, people have families, they have children, the kids grow up, the kids get cars. Sometimes you see, there'll, there'll be four cars in the parking lot, then, you know, I, I know my neighborhood, I've, I, I was in, the young ones in the neighborhood, we then had one car, two cars, three cars, four cars, now we're back down to two cars, and now we see other properties that, you know, families are growing up and fam- you know, so it, it doesn't have any negative impact. It's the creation of a, of a dwelling unit within the town under the parameters of the specific bylaw to allow this to happen. And in addition, if you remember from the layout of this property, nothing is changing. Nothing is changing. There's already an ingress and egress to the, uh, nineteen eighty-four square foot unit. It is also already existing ingress and egress to the nine hundred ten square foot unit that's gonna be created. So nothing is changing. You know, in, in terms of the neighborhood character and social structure and, you know, other issues that, you know, to be looked upon, you know, again, I would say that's why this bylaw was put into place to begin with. You know, adding a residential unit, the, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for years has been trying to say, hey, your town should do what they can to help create housing. And this is gonna be a very nice unit. This would be, you know, on a sixty-eight thousand, three hundred eighty-two square foot parcel, did you create another dwelling unit? did you create another dwelling unit that already basically can be put into action, can function as such without doing anything? So it, it's, I would suggest that the reason why this was proposed to be implemented was for a purpose. To allow these very large homes to create an exist- an additional dwelling unit, providing meet all the criteria. And this does meet the criteria. We can't allow popularity or being unpopular to have any effect in the determination of the application of the bylaw. You know, we were submitted, I, I know at the last hearing, Mr., a question had come up the hearing before. I know that there was a question about the water department. They have submitted a letter saying that.
I believe that was resolved, yeah.
It's fully, fully satisfactory to the water department. Uh, you know, there were some issues in terms of, you know, when people do things to the property, sometimes if the, you know, they're doing construction, they might put something outside. Everyone does it, but, you know, not for long term or things of that. So I know if you do, then you call up the building commissioner and say, gee, you know, is, is that supposed to be what it's like? But it, it's not a matter of, you know, well, I called the police on them five times. No one's ever charged Mr. Harvey with anything. No one's, you know, as I say, what we have to look at is the bylaw. This is a very large structure. It falls within under the parameters of the ordinance. The ZBA has granted permits, you know, and again, specifically referencing the sixty-one Carlisle Street. And, you know, this, this is a prime location for this to be permitted under your bylaw. It, it's fully compliant. It provides an additional housing unit in the town. And my suggestion is that there was nothing that was brought up in terms of, at the last meeting, to indicate that this isn't deserving of a approval by the board. It's fully compliant and it's what was intended. Again, the town voted on it. They didn't exclude Bartlett Street from the parameters of the application. The Attorney General's Office approved it. And we're now here asking for this to be allowed. And I would just submit that, that the board do so.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, and one other thing, I know that there was a question before about floor plans. I know Mr. Harvey Wenden had an engineer.
Yeah, I think we did receive those.
And, and submit them as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board regarding the application? Is a public hearing still? So I'm gonna open this up to the audience, if someone would like to speak in opposition or agreement with the application. How was the time?
Uh, good evening. My name is Thomas Hill. I reside at thirty-nine Bartlett Street, diagonally across from Mr. Harvey's property. Tonight, I'm listening to Mr. Harvey's attorney get up here and talk about how it's going to be this, uh, nine, um, nine hundred square foot apartment that he's going to rent out. So obviously, Mr. Harvey and his lawyer haven't talked about the letter that Mr. Harvey wrote me and signed as an attorney, and which I gave to the board. And in this letter, he states, "When I begin to legally rent rooms at my home." So if he's just adding one apartment, which is supposed to be a one-bedroom apartment, how are you renting rooms at that house? Did he talk to you about this lawyer, about this letter? I'm, I'm, I'm just asking whether he had.
Actually, if you went through the board, it would be helpful.
Excuse me. Um, I don't know whether Mr. Harvey had conversation with his attorney about this, but I have a legally signed letter, handwriting Esquire, he's an attorney, and that he's going to legally rent out rooms when this conversion happens. So, um, I'm just wondering, you know, how can he get up here and state that he's doing this beautiful thing for the town, adding this apartment? It's not a multifamily, um, house that you can rent rooms. It's not a, you know, as far as I know, everything that I've read about this, that you could do something like that. But, uh, it kinda irked me when, um, I was hearing him, uh, talk about this. But, um, I wasn't expecting to speak tonight, except, um, I was given a letter from one of our neighbors. And she asked if I could read this. She and the other two owners of the house at twenty-two Bartlett were not able to attend. So this is a letter from Carrie Ives and John and Tiffany Fisher, owners of twenty-two Bartlett Street, to the chair members of the zoning board. This letter is in reference to the request for a special permit for thirty-six Bartlett Street. Thank you for hearing the concerns of the abuddies and neighbors of their property. We request that you deny the special permit to modify zoning for this house. There are a few areas of Chelmsford that still have the original single-family homes of times gone by. Bartlett Street is one of them. There are a few areas of Chelmsford that still have some of the oldest trees in town. Bartlett Street is one of them. One of the provisions of the special permit that needs to be met for approval is, um, in B criteria, which read in part, "Special permit shall be granted upon determination that the adverse effects of the proposed use will not outweigh its beneficial impacts to the town or to the neighborhood. And view with a particular characteristics of the site and the proposal in relation to that site. In addition to any specific factors that may be set forth in this chapter, the determination shall include consideration of each of the following. Paying particular attention to the neighborhood character and social structure and the impacts on the natural environment." In regard to the neighborhood character, just in the time since this motion has appeared in front of this board, both the Board of Health and the police have been involved with this property. We suggest this shows a disregard for the character of the neighborhood. Perhaps also there is a disregard for the social structures of the neighborhood. I recognize that might be a hard term to legislate based on the number of neighbors who are speaking against this proposal and who have felt the need to involve the Board of Health and Police. In regards to the impacts on the natural environment, since the owners of thirty-six Bartlett Street moved in, stately healthy trees have been cut down. In addition, since this motion has appeared in front of the board, one of the remaining trees has been spray painted. Both acts show a negative impact on the natural environment. On a more personal note, when we bought our property in two thousand and seventeen, we made a promise to the former owners of our house, Dr. and Mrs. Kaplan, that we would continue to honor and preserve the historic nature of not just our house, but of our neighborhood. That promise is why we have attended each of these hearings and why we submit this letter today when we are unable to attend in person. We ask for your help in keeping our promise and preserving the integrity of our neighborhood. Thank you for your time and your service to our town. Carrie Ives. So, um, with that, um, that's all I have to say.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Ackley. I reside at eighty-four Bartlett Street. I just wanted to state, I mean, I hear Mr. Harvey's attorney saying this is a grand house. I mean, that's subjective. And also, I think, you know, in nineteen oh-three, this house did not have the addition on it that was built in around nineteen fifty. That is the apartment that they are gonna be trying to rent out. Because, I mean, if you go on, um, Google and look up the real estate records, you can see there was already a kitchen there, you know, the bedroom. It was already ma- made out, and even the town real estate maps show it, but they don't state that this house has two kitchens. I mean, this house, if it's stately, on the, the town assessor's office has it as a three-bedroom house. I also, we just wanna state that, yes, I mean, we're upset, we just don't, yes, don't feel it fits the neighborhood. And it would be a terrible thing to go down to start letting the houses on the street, or any of the nice houses in town, turn into multifamilies. And there's plenty of apartment buildings nowadays, it seems to be going up everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maureen Pellegrini, twenty-nine Bartlett Street. I did speak at the last meeting, and I would like to address what the lawyer had said, because I think if we, this is not about personalities. I mean, you know, people will do what they will do, and this is not a vindictive. We don't want somebody in our neighborhood. What we want is we wanna keep our neighborhood. And this isn't about apartments and the betterment of the town. There are, I don't know how many apartments, but I'm sure if somebody could tell me, just being built in the last two years down in the center, less than a half mile away. So this is, I don't think that really adding the apartment is gonna change the, the social structure and be the right thing for the town. Looking at the big picture, it's not, you know, to, it's like, who are we to say, oh, we don't want this in our neighborhood? It's not about being elitist. It's... For people that love old homes and, and appreciate the history of the homes, we're stewards of these. And when you take that away, it can't, it can't come back. The, I don't know the numbers right now with the, so I, I understand he reaches the special permit with the age and the, and the, um, amount of land he has and all of that. But then there's also the part that allows the neighborhood to talk about what will happen. And it will change traffic, because he may not change the exterior of the house. He does not need to do that. But we have seen, and it's proven all over town, what he has done with the old homes. He's done lovely things with them, but there are now parking lots there. And he can't even keep the number of cars that he has in his yard right now. There's people, there's always a car parked on the front, on the front lawn, in front of the front door. And that's his choice, that's his yard, he can do that. But once he's renting to somebody, he's gonna have a responsibility to that. And the gardens and the landscaping on Bartlett Street is really special. And I get we're lucky to live there, but we work hard to maintain it. Everybody does, we have a pride in it. So I don't wanna take an apartment from somebody else. And I know he meets the special permits on one level, but I don't think he does in regards to the traffic flow, the impact of the natural habitat, and how it is going to change the character of our neighborhood. I don't think there is any doubt that that's gonna, that's gonna happen. So, thank you for listening.
Are there further comments? Would you like a moment to speak before we close the public hearing?
Well, I, I guess just to address the issue about renting rooms. I mean, the nine hundred and eight square foot unit, there is a floor plan that I think it shows four rooms, a kitchen, uh, bedroom, a laundry room, a living room. And so, uh, you know, a- again, the issue is, it's a residential use on a residential street, and there is no change. There's no change to the exterior. And all it is, is adding a unit pursuant to the terms of the bylaw that was approved at town meeting and approved by the AG's office. Again, we would ask for, uh, the board to approve the request as submitted.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing? motion by Steve, second. All in favor? Hi? Think we can take this up?
Yes.
Any thoughts?
One ninety-five oh-three, I think the only one that I'm really stuck on is.
Which one? One ninety-five oh-three.
Special permits, B, section B. The only one I'm really stuck on is the neighborhood character. I don't think the traffic flow or impacts on natural. Yeah, I, I don't think, like, um, counsel said, I mean, kids get cars and all that. So I don't think that it's gonna be much of that. The only thing I'm really thinking it would affect is the neighborhood character and social structures.
Well, if he meets ninety-five thirteen, by re- I mean, why would we, the conversion by age, space, and ninety-five thirteen, I guess I'm confused as to why.
I'm not sure, I don't know, ninety-five thirteen.
When ninety-five thirteen is the conversion, he's, it says in there, "Any building existing prior to the adoption of these bylaws," which was in nineteen thirty-nine, can, single families can convert to multifamilies with the requirements of nine hundred square feet before nineteen thirty-eight and not exchange the exterior of.
So.
Still a special permit.
He, he has the six hundred square feet for each unit. He has a lot that's over fifteen thousand square feet.
He meets all these.
Right, okay, so.
Why are we, if he meets all these requirements, I guess I'm confused as to why we're.
Well, he still has to meet the requirements of the special permit. We're issuing a special permit.
Because he's in the RB district?
That's right. It's, it's under the table of use, uses. And it, it specifically says in the table of uses that you need a special permit for a conversion. This specific, uh, specific.
Our task is to, to issue a special permit.
Yeah, that's all it's.
Okay.
So they've met all the conversion requirements, I think there's no question about that.
So now we still have to meet the, okay, convert, so we still have to meet the special permit requirements. Okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna answer that, that's the.
Yep, I'm tracking that. Okay. I was just trying to figure out why, okay. I think that's where my disconnect was, 'cause.
So a question about what you were saying, Nancy, traffic flow and safety. You were also saying people made a point of the parking, the fact that it will have a parking lot, not a driveway.
I think that, and I, to Nancy's point goes to right. I think they have the right to park. You, you can put a driveway anywhere on your property, you don't need to pave it, and you can put it right up to your property line. So I think you can drive through town and see any number of homes that have multiple cars parked on pavement, off pavement. And it's not the prettiest sometimes, but it's, it's not, uh, something I think is, is an issue.
It's a small unit, too. It's not like they're adding where it's gonna be like multiple people, and you're gonna need a ton of parking. So I, I don't think that one, for me at least.
But I do struggle with the neighborhood character as well. There's certainly been, uh, very large opposition from the neighborhood to the character of the space.
Right. I agree.
It's concerning. I, I think the traffic flow is, even if there was more than one car parked there, is not something you would not typically find, uh, on Bartlett Street or otherwise. But the neighborhood character and social structure is, uh, what seems to be creating the most concern. Uh, the impacts on the natural environment, unfortunately, you can take down every tree in your yard. There's no, uh, whether you're getting this, uh, conversion or not, you still have the right to do that.
And there's nothing that prevents, if I'm renting rooms out of my house, I did, it's a single-family home, and I have ten bedrooms, and I choose to rent each room out of that hot, my own house. There's nothing preventing me from doing that, according to the bylaws, right?
I think he would disagree with you, but we can, uh.
Where, I mean, where.
You're running a business when you do that.
Yeah.
Is that, was that considered?
We have closed the public meeting, but.
Well, he's part of the board.
He's part of it.
Okay, yes, as a board member, you can speak, I'm sorry, of course. Distance threw me.
I, I don't recall anything in the bylaws that, uh, mention renting rooms, but the minute you do, uh.
If I have five roommates, share the price of the mortgage.
Well, now you got a rooming house. Well, now you got a rooming house.
I don't think that's really before us, though. I mean, that was just-
No, I think she's just, like, prophesies, is this a problem or not?
When we get into the whole parking and, you know, just saying, you know-
Well, you're creating a legal apartment in this case, where in that case, you're not creating anything.
It's just a scenario, I was just, you know, 'cause they were talking about character and changing environment and aspect, and this second, first unit has, and there was a mention about him renting rooms. I'm just trying to see legality-wise and-
Yeah, I mean, that is not before us, I think.
No, 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 I know, no, not that.
I guess there was a letter, but that is not before us.
No, I know, I'm not trying to do that legally, but if others were to do the same thing in their own home, changing that environment or changing that in their neighborhood, changing the setting or the tone of the neighborhood or whatnot, but doing such so, and that doesn't prevent them from doing that without permission, so just, again, my thoughts, that's all.
What happened?
I do remember this is a special permit, so the board obviously can impose conditions.
Are there any thoughts about a condition that would?
My biggest thought is, who has the best idea about the neighborhood character? Probably the people in that neighborhood, and they're all, not all, but many of them have come out and-
It was pretty substantial, uh, opposition, for sure.
And then how, how far do imposing conditions, one, who ensures the conditions are followed? I get Jose. But two, how far are we from imposing conditions to try and maintain the neighborhood, two, to where we're crossing over and violating our, the owner's rights, per se? Like you said, anyone can cut down all the trees they want on their property, it's their property, so what's the reality of really being able to maintain the character of the neighborhood through conditions, by applying realistic conditions, if we were to?
I guess on that point, my thing would be, for anyone who has some concerns about meeting the requirements of the special permit, does anyone have one or two things that they would put that would fix that? Like any, like, what would you say that we're gonna put as a limitation, or you could put as a limitation that would absolve these issues? I mean, I can't think of, oh, you know, you must keep the house painted purple, like, there's nothing that I can think of that would make me go, oh, yeah, that would solve-
That would create a harmony, you know?
Yeah, I think there'd be, and I think with historical, you know, historical trends, I think there's always, someone will find the loophole to do, or as they want, so there's no, I can't see a way, it's not one thing, like, you can say, put mature vegetation on the border, you know, on your property line, and that will solve the problem. I don't think that's gonna be a way. I mean, I don't know how it's serving community needs. Is there a community need for apartments in this place?
It's creating a housing, affordable or otherwise, is an argument, but it is creating housing.
It's a second, it's creating a second apartment, 'cause there's already a single dwelling there, and it's making a second on the same spot, so.
I don't think it has a fiscal impact. I don't think it has an impact on town services, tax base, it's negligible, and employment, really zero effect.
You'd say that the impact on housing would also be negligible in comparison to other efforts going on in the town.
Well, I don't think it's a plus or a minus, item six. I just, I'm really stuck on four, because there's such opposition to it.
I'm all for making a motion.
I think that would be time if everyone has said what they wanna say.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit under 195-5, Use Regulations A4 in accordance with section 195-13, conversion of dwelling units, to convert a single-family dwelling existing prior to 1938 into a two-family dwelling, and other relief deemed necessary for 36 Bartlett Street.
I'll second the motion. Oh, with all previous letters written, you have to like-
Yeah, with all previous, with all letters written to the record.
Good, on favor? Opposed? Unanimous? We have minutes before Jamie sneaks out and I didn't, yeah, I shut up, I'm sorry. I didn't, I can't, I can't, I can't say it. I don't know who's, someone gave it to me and said this is her number.
That was my work number.
I don't know, I don't know, I, uh-
There's a lady from the audience.
Okay, thank you. I hope you're feeling all better.
A lady from the audience gave it to me?
Yeah, right there with the pocket look over her.
He's rolling over. Yes, thanks for your time.
Appreciate it.
And I am so, so deeply sorry. You have my number, don't you have that?
We have to go over the minutes?
Yep.
I think he's got Jackie's number.
Charlie.
Did you look under Jackie in your phone? Is he even watching?
I don't know. I have no idea.
We're still on.
This is yours, official.
I don't know if it's even related to that, yes, I have no idea. Yeah, so you weren't here, and then we said, okay, we can get these ones out of the way, and did not have your phone number, and Becky probably does. But then we went through the whole process, then we got to Bartlett Street, and there was no Jackie. We thought you were gonna come, you know, run in.
No Jackie, did you hear that, right? No Jackie?
No Jackie, I did it again. No Jackie.
I got, I got left work late, and I had two more meetings.
I almost called Jackie instead. I said, come down and act like her, and it'll be fine.
I was, as you can see, I was bam, 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 and I was like, you called, the church phone rang, and I thought it was, uh-
I, yeah, I had no other contact. So we're gonna continue, which would have been to September, which-
Oh, no, I'm glad you're home.
We would have needed escort out to the car, I think.
Yeah, no, no, it's hard, but no, I'll be there.
Okay, the minutes. Got a motion to approve the minutes of May, minutes of May 4th.
Well, you'll have my number before I leave. So sorry.
That's a good idea. And I would have called you earlier, it just didn't click again until, uh-
Well, we thought you were coming, so, no, she just needs a couple minutes.
We were getting some stuff out of the way.
Totally, I was so busy with so much stuff.
And this is Rod Claves, this is Jamie Brown.
AKA Jackie.
AKA Jackie.
Are you the new associate board member?
Yes.
Excellent, yes, hi, thank you.
Just show me my Jackie tattoo.
Yes, I'm the Jackie. Only been sitting next to him for four-plus years, and I'm still Jackie.
Jackie was way, way-
I almost said it when I called you, I said, Jackie, and I did. It would only have been a little funny. That was just weird.
Are we doing the May's minutes?
The May's minutes.
Which I was not here for.
Seriously?
Yeah.
You were not, no?
I was not.
So then we cannot use her for-
Should we just continue it to September?
Yeah, we'll just continue it to September, that's all we can do.
I had to, I had to do the mullen for May to vote tonight.
Yes.
I have that right here.
She did the mullen for May? Can she do the minutes then?
Yeah.
For May?
I did a mullen for May so I could vote tonight.
Well, you watched the whole video, so she knows exactly what happened.
I did, I mean, I did.
You did?
I mean, I only watched, no, I only watched for Bartlett.
Motion to approve the minutes of May 4th?
Whoa.
Wow, that was a shutdown quick.
Attorney.
Yeah.
Well, the way I read it is specifically for Bartlett.
It doesn't, we can just carry until September.
Yeah.
It fell wonderfully in the cycle, we take August off.
You'll be able to get to that five. My first week here, I'm gonna get a month off.
Well, we don't dock our pay, so we feel it's fair.
Of course, I'm still waiting for my pay, so good luck on that.
It was doubled this year, though.
Yeah, I know. Do we have to motion to continue the minutes?
Maybe that check goes to Jackie.
Yes, motion to continue.
I'll call it, too.
I'll make a motion to continue approval of the May minutes to September 7th.
I second.
Second, on favor?
Aye. I make a motion to adjourn.
And a motion to adjourn.
I just did.
On favor?
Aye.
Good night, y'all.